All right. Welcome to the November 19th, 2024 meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. That's a good thing to know. Let's redo that. Good evening. Welcome to the December 3rd meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. We don't have Ayana here to call the role. Suggestions on how we handle that?
I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you.
And I'll do it better than I did the Chair notes, which had the old name on it.
And we'll just cross out November 19th. No worries. It's fixed.
We do appreciate Ayana's help.
Yes.
Okay. Chair Chatters?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Here.
Commissioner Ballard?
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here.
And Commissioner Shelby?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins, if you wouldn't mind reading the land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stuhobes people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. And Commissioners, we will resolve the approval of the November 19th and the December 3rd today's meeting minutes at the final meeting of the year, which will be December 17th. We now have an opportunity for Commissioner reports. Okay, we'll turn it over to staff. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Atkins, please.
Yeah, sorry to make this personal, but I will not be present at our next meeting on the 17th, right? Because I'm off getting married. And will be in California during that time. So please, I hope that will excuse my absence.
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely, well.
Just this one.
I think that's probably excusable.
Congratulations, Commissioner Atkins. We can't wait to see the photos from that. Onto staff reports.
Hardy, congratulations, of course, to Commissioner Atkins. That's great news. It's only been two weeks, and there was a holiday in there and some other time off, so not a lot has transpired in our world since our last meeting. So no staff comments, other than I truly appreciate the work that you do. I think we work you one of the hardest of all of the boards and commissions, but all of the boards and commissions really contribute a lot to the city of Everett, and it's a labor of love and a volunteer. And at the end of each year, we do an event to appreciate those who are on the boards and commissions, and I think you would have received probably an invitation personally from the mayor for that. It's coming up on Thursday, December 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. 11th? December, I got the 12th. December 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Warehouser Room. If you have not received a direct invitation, we'll make sure to get that out to you. But let this be your invitation to come be celebrated with some food and drinks and mingling with some of your other board and commission members. But in the meantime, just as always, really appreciate the work that you do. That is it for staff comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll hold public comment to the end of the agenda. We'll just do one at the very end. So I think we're ready to move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Design and Development Goals and Policies.
So what we sent out to you was a more thorough draft of the design and development goals and policies. At some point earlier this fall, I want to say mid-September, we brought to you the goals alignment on design and development and went through how we are putting urban form being the big picture from the 5,000-foot look down, down to now we're at the block in the street level in the community development area of the city. So we have a group of 11 goals that we have built on. I'm not going to read them all to you, because you are all capable readers and sit here. There's nothing I despise more than being read to when people have already read things. And then we have divided up the policies, looking at overall city image, districts and neighborhoods, as well as mixed-use centers, corridors and connections, metro Everett and mixed-use centers, because some of the metro Everett stuff does also apply to mixed-use. And we haven't figured out how to basically make that two separate areas, but also similar. So that's what it is right now. Green building and sustainability, historic preservation, which has been reviewed with the Historical Commission on a few occasions, signs and off-site impacts. So we have tried to make sure we have covered all of the topics in the area. I'm sure we've missed something. And tried to make sure that we were as thorough in putting it together as you would expect of us, and that we have looked at it from a wide variety of lenses and equitability, as well as strong, sound planning principles.
The only other note of introduction is, as with all of the elements, we're trying to slim and trim, and did so here. I think the urban design element is what this element would have been called in the existing plan. We were at 4,100 words with that urban design element of just goals and policies, which is a lot to get through, and it's difficult for the policies to really be implementable if there are so many of them. So I think this version here has 2,500 words, so almost half. Hopefully, it's distilled down to the more important ones. There was one concept that gateway corridors, I think most of the concepts remain, minor changes, rewording, trying to be more clear, actionable, and all of that. There was a gateway corridors concept that appeared in a lot of different policies. That's one that we've proposed dropping, and I think that's the one thing that I could point to that's a real significant change from the previous set. We still think that gateways to the city are important to identify and give good treatment to. With the record that we have, we had a tough time implementing and really knowing what to do with the gateway corridors concept. It covered most of the arterials in the city, so maybe the same concepts are picked up in other policies just by talking about streetscapes in general and everything. But just wanted to flag that one. We've got a couple policies where there are questions. Some of them are just unresolved questions from when we sent the packet out that I had for Alesan that we can talk about together. But as we've done with the rest of the policies, want to give you the opportunity to ask some questions or give some feedback first.
Commissioners? I just have to say, I thought that you did a really great job of whittling down some of the fat from the previous versions of this. So thank you for that. And that's not easy work to do, so thank you for that. Anything jumping out at you, Commissioners? So Yorik, you mentioned that there were a couple of particular discussion items that you might want to raise.
Yeah. Just maybe as conversation starter, the first one that I've got is that Goals DD-8 and DD-9 seemed similar, and I had an idea to consolidate, maybe. Alesan had some, I think it's nine was referring more to historic preservation and...
And eight was new construction.
Eight was new construction. So both of them are about buildings. I see the word "architecture" in both. I see "innovation" in both. So that was just one of the comments that I had that we tossed your way. So Alesan, you're thinking that nine, that eight is new construction and nine is more the whole?
Yes. And it could be delineated a little bit differently?
I guess, given that these are sort of the policy, these are the policy parts of...
These are the goals.
These are the goal, okay. I guess in some ways, I guess if looking to streamline things maybe a little more, I would just say DD-8 seems a little bit more, how do I say?
Aspirational.
Aspirational, yeah, than anything really concrete. And certainly, it's a good sentiment, but I don't know that it actually provides any particular direction, so...
Well, the goal is aspirational.
Well, no, I guess I get that, but I guess it almost doesn't seem actionable, in a sense. I mean, preserve, it's a little more fluffy, I guess. So, not that it's not laudable, but I almost think that it's something that could maybe be even, again, looking to streamline, maybe even be eliminated. Or maybe even somehow eight and nine could kind of maybe be condensed, just promote, promoting a greener character, you know, that would, and that, you know, given that's a very fluffy, larger statement, and then, you know, more specifically talking about the preserving actual, you know, resources on the ground. But that would only be my thought. Nothing's anything wrong with necessarily how it is.
Sure.
Right?
No, that's where we were.
Did you want to keep one for new and one for old? Is that why you have two, or...?
I think we got opinions from different groups. The Historic Preservation Commission is, obviously, as their role, is very focused on preserving distinct and unique architecture, and that those buildings are maintained or preserved. And yet, the other aspiration is that the new buildings are diverse, innovative, and provide character to the community. So they're sort of, how do we weigh both or not weigh both? It's...
Sorry. If you wouldn't have told me one was for new and one was for old, I wouldn't have been able to tell. In fact, I actually thought number nine was for the newer buildings.
Okay.
And I really like using the word, like, I like the concept of diversity of architectural styles, old or new. But that is kind of already pulled in, and maybe you switch a word out, because you already have architectural design. You have innovation in both. I do see that construction techniques is probably the only signal, like, signal that it's in process or is to be done. But I kind of feel like you could make number nine apply to both. Especially because you said something, and unfortunately, I can't remember that, the Historical Society, obviously, they're trying to preserve. That's not even in here. Like, that word's not in here, so either...
It is in 11.
It is in 11, sure. But, yeah, I don't know. I kind of, I mean, nine kind of feels like it encompasses a lot of eight.
Okay.
But...
Whatever. Do you have different thoughts?
Could number, we're talking about DD-9, which said...
Eight and nine.
What was that?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine. So nine says preserve major stands of trees, et cetera.
No, 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 goals.
Yeah, goals, okay. I was a little confused about that, too.
We're in goals.
No.
On page one.
Okay, okay. I was on the next page there.
Sorry.
Well, and I think maybe, I'm wondering if this same conversation then could also apply to DD-8 and nine.
Okay. So Goal 10, new development is compatible and graceful transitions between differing land used, dah 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 dah. That's more talking about land use of new, like, we're not talking about the building, necessarily.
We are talking about the buildings that are between different land uses, densities, and intensities. So the transitions between, like, mixed-use centers to a residential or industrial to a residential or whatever, that there is a transition that takes into account the differences on either side.
Okay, yeah, leave that one in there.
Okay.
Don't get rid of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I should go back and correct my, I thought we were talking about the policies, DD-8 and DD-9, although I do think maybe that's something we could talk about. But I was off looking, okay, goals eight and nine, now I'm rereading that.
Okay. That's fine.
My apologies for...
That's fine.
I think that they are separate enough in a distinct way, where I'm not sure that, I see a distinction between them, and I'm not sure you could roll them into one.
Well, maybe I need to go back and look at protecting the diversity of what, you know, for the already-built versions versus the new construction, and look at the language to that effect, so that it actually reflects a protection and a willingness to, protection on one hand, and then a willingness to move forward using a variety of styles, techniques, and systems for development.
So I think the thing that strikes me as a difference is the statement about enduring and resilient. So actually, on second thought, maybe there is a way to roll them together, if you can incorporate that concept of buildings not only being diverse in terms of style and innovative and varying in construction technique, but also enduring, but resulting in buildings that are enduring and resilient.
Because, Chatters, that's kind of exactly what I just started thinking. I'm like, well, why wouldn't you want either of these to apply to the opposite? You know what I mean? Like, the goal is actually the same for both. One is...
To build new, as well as to protect the existing.
Right. You want them to look cool, and you want them to stick around for a while.
Yeah. No, I think that's fine, and I'm more than happy to take another crack at it.
Whatever you want to do.
I almost think that seven is implicated, Goal seven, eight, nine are somewhat, I guess, flow from Goal seven as well. There's some also repetition and overlap.
I mean, enduring is different, I think, than resilient to change, in a way. Because, I mean, even though it has lasted, it's not necessarily resilient. Look at our unreinforced masonry. It's enduring, but it's not exactly resilient to our existing, what we know now about our geomorphology and how it could be truly adversely impacted in a major earthquake. I mean, it would, there's potential that it can be resilient, but it isn't in and of itself right now. And that's more, I think seven's more based on hazards and what we're facing in our community right now.
Could the enduring piece be, because Commissioner Yanisak is correct about DD-7, that it does address the idea of resiliency. So perhaps the idea of enduring could be incorporated into Goal DD-8? And then eliminate Goal DD-9?
Yeah, I can, I'll take a crack at them.
Not nine, I like nine.
Well, nine can be, we can fix it so that it gets bold.
They're all wonderful.
Yeah. For eight and nine.
10, if you got it down to 10 goals, for some reason, that's an even...
That's a good number.
Okay. The 10 commandments, we need the 10 goals.
There's some, yeah.
We can do, we can, we can work on eight and nine.
And since the mistake in eight and nine, Commissioner Yanisak...
Policy, yeah, policy.
Yeah, if we could maybe take a look at that one, because I thought that those could be condensed potentially. Perhaps the idea of not just preserving, but also promoting the increase of et cetera, et cetera, could bring in DD-8 into DD-9?
Yeah, this one, we have, the DD-8 is exactly an existing objective, Objective 8.1.1, to achieve a greener character of time. That's not exactly the same. Currently says to achieve a greener character over time, reflecting the spectacular natural landscape within and surrounding the community. So definitely got the right idea there. The preserve major stands of trees, there are, there's a policy at the far other end of the element, the urban design element, that says develop, no, encourage the Washington State DOT to preserve the large native trees growing within and adjacent to the I-5 right-of-way and supplement with additional tree plantings.
Those are existing policies in the existing plan.
So just a little bit of how we got to those two.
I think the other thing is that nine comes from the Critical Areas Plan.
And I guess between those two, going back to my original comment, nine to me is a little more concrete. Number eight is more aspirational, like a goal necessarily than a particular, giving you some, a particular directive. Anyway.
It sounds more subjective.
Right.
Whereas nine is more concrete directives. And so maybe adding the directive in, rather than saying, we're going to strive to achieve greener character, you would add that as a directive, which would be to preserve what we have and to promote the increase of, et cetera, the other characteristics that are kind of defined there under DD-9.
Yeah, I could see getting rid of eight. It's pretty vague.
Incorporating it into the goals, too. I don't see the...
Yeah, in some ways, to me, it kind of, at least plays with the green building and sustainability section in some ways. I mean, I was just talking about something maybe a little bit different, but that spirit.
I had a question on DD-3 of, there's a couple things to encourage, and just how do we encourage these indoor-outdoor connections, the ground floor transparency, and canopies? I know how to require, I know how to prohibit.
Which one are we talking about, so everybody's on the same page?
DD-3.
Okay. Of the policies.
Of the policies. So I know how to require, I know how to prohibit through regulations. We can encourage through incentives, so if there are kind of incentive programs, like just for these sorts of, this is about a soft transition from in to out, so I get the value of it.
Do you have an idea on an incentive? Like, does something come to mind, or are we really trying to be creative?
No, I mean, the ground floor transparency, we have requirements on certain streets. There's another policy that's stronger on that in mixed-use center. I think it says require ground floor transparency as part of a policy in the centers. Currently, we require between 60 and 90% building front, ground floor transparency on frontages on the pedestrian and TOD and connector streets. Pedestrian paths will probably be internal to a development. I could see providing a menu of options and, you know, using those other kind of policy directives to get us towards there.
But there are not also directives about canopies and covers. So I guess in some ways, you know, talking about encouraging these things, encouraging these things when they're already specifically in the code and required.
Right.
In some ways, seems less, less than what is actually already in the code, so almost selling it too short.
This is a debate we have rather regularly internally, because if it's in the code already, I'm of the mind that it's already taken care of.
Right.
Yorik is of the mind that if it's in the code, it still needs to reflect back to a policy. Because how do we say that it should be there if it isn't in a policy? And I'm like, we don't have policies that say you can't speed, but we have regulations that say you can't speed. So this is...
It's a tough one.
Yeah, which one? I mean, it's sort of chicken and egg at the same time. It's sort of...
So can you give me a real-life example of what you're talking about? I understand, but I was given advice recently to ask for things more in layman's terms, in real-life examples. So here's me doing that. I'm trying to think, like, the, like, make sure the sidewalk has planters on it? Like, what are we talking about for number DD-3?
So I think of these as a little bit, each sentence is almost a slightly different topic, although they're all related by this connection from inside to outside. Ground floor transparency is windows.
Right.
Pedestrian paths, or primary pedestrian circulation paths, I would not interpret as being the sidewalk. I would interpret that as being internal to development. So maybe if you have a shopping center, you have the walkways between parking lots and the buildings, or...
Like U Village.
Yeah. Maybe it's even in residential where you go.
Or even a really bad example of that is when you're going from the Ever Park Garage up to Colby, and there's that little alley, and you're walking through, yes, there are pieces of art, but you're walking through absolute brick walls.
Right.
And it's like, okay, this is a public right-of-way, and...
Yet, here we are.
Here we are, scrunched, and is this a place that I want to be? And so if you're looking at it from, how do we make this a better place in the event that we are doing it again? Would you want visibility from the adjacent buildings? And would you want cover so that you aren't getting wet?
I do like that part.
Yes, so...
Especially around here.
If you're looking at it from where it doesn't exist to what it could be, is a little bit different.
Do we, for encourage ground floor recesses, are we already doing that somewhere else? Or is that, how is that different than a setback? Are you meaning like, your porch can be right here, but your door should be back? Is that what that kind of is referring to?
I think with bigger buildings, it would be like where the door is inside of a, there's a word for it, that it's...
Vestabule.
Vestabule, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess that gives some articulation to the street, some ins and outs and some visual interest, and maybe some weather protection for folks waiting for the door to open.
Would a builder already not do that inherently?
Depends on who's designing the building and who's paying for it.
I'm definitely, you know, being optimistic on that one, but...
So it sounds like the reason, I mean, one justification for this policy then is to provide a policy support for existing provisions in the code. I mean, perhaps to make it a little more actionable, rather than, you know, say, like, encourage these opportunities, it could be, the policy could be to establish, you know, regular... it could be, the policy could be to establish regulations about these particular things or.
Yeah.
Which is a little bit more specific and then provides us for, and then the, the flexibility on that could be within the code provisions and.
Yeah, I think of encourage as being a step short of require. It implies flexibility, it implies either incentive or options.
Right.
So maybe you get relief from something if you do this, or you have a menu and that's one of them. So it's okay to, to have it like that. I, I'm not exactly sure where we're at in terms of requirement versus encouragement now. The reason I like having policies describe key regulations that we have is that it sets the tone for the management of that regulation over time. And so if somebody says, let's get rid of it, there's a policy to help you protect it. If that's our long-term, like this is an important concept. Or as it evolves, look to those policies to see what is it that we should hold on to and what parts are maybe less important. So maybe, I mean, things like primary pedestrian circulation paths, do you know if that's referring to side, like, I know what we require on frontage on these pedestrian and TOD designated streets and in centers and all of that. So maybe it's a little bit more specificity about where we're encouraging the ground floor transparency. Maybe those primary circulation paths are the sidewalks and the internal circulations.
I mean, I think the overall goal of the policy makes sense. I do kind of like your menu option idea. But it sounds like you'd have to put a lot into that.
We do not do very much around transparency that I can think of, except on those designated streets currently. So.
I mean, that's like, you're saying like windows for, like.
Yeah.
I wouldn't over require windows.
They are expensive.
Yeah.
They are energy inefficient and they're a challenge with the energy code and everything. But they provide that visual interest that's really important in certain high-traffic and high, high-interest areas.
I think Yorick has convinced me, I, I think, I think the kind of way it is makes sense to me.
Great. We can put, instead of encourage, strengthen opportunities and support ground floor resources, recesses.
Yeah.
I was just thesaurusing.
Yeah. Yeah, I had that real quick.
I guess one, since we're talking transparency, the maintenance of transparency is something that's come up frequently. So we require that transparency on a street like, like this. If you were to rebuild this building, which we're not going to do, because we have preservation policies and it's a good building. But if you were to rebuild the building, you'd be required to have ninety percent of the ground floor be transparent, ninety percent on pedestrian and TOD streets, I think, both? I'll double check that number.
I didn't think I was anti-window, but apparently I'm a little bit anti-window. Does that include doors?
Yes. So TOD streets, which is Pacific and the couple of blocks on either side of them, and then everything around Everett Station, the pedestrian streets, so this one would be sixty percent.
Okay.
And then connectors and residential mixed use are forty-five percent. And then outside of that, there's only a limitation on very large blank walls, but otherwise it can be fully untransparent. We're working on middle housing regulations and using the state guidance on that and there, we'll, we'll talk about that soon. But there are some transparency provisions in the guidance that we may want to pick up. Where I was going is ninety percent, sixty percent, what have you, it's costly. And sometimes the first thing you do is put up lines or window wraps or otherwise block it with the back of shelving. It's a lot to ask of a building owner to keep it transparent by law forever. It's a lot to ask of staff to administer modifications to that. If it's a bathroom or if the use changes, or if there's just a really good reason to have it blocked off. It's a doctor's office or something. So that's a really tough one. So I hear complaints all the time. You require transparency, it's important to a vibrant retail street and everything, and the first thing they do is put up lines. What say the commission about going in a direction of maintenance of transparency versus simply requiring the building permit transparency?
Yeah, I'm back to anti-window. It's a little, well, that was the first thing I thought of, I'm like, well, if you work for a doctor's office, you immediately can't show anything because you have hip everywhere. Or if you don't want people to look at you, which is the bigger one, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't want to, I'm working. Plus the people who get the offices get the windows or, you know, high and mighty. You get a window office.
Was your question about.
I have windows on two sides, so I'm not high or mighty.
Watch out.
Yorick, was your question about going away from saying that you have to have basically trans, things that you could see through as opposed to actually making the requirement go for it? Not only does it have to be transparent, but you actually, you can't then block it?
Right. I did see, I was looking for, it's a complaint we get very regularly, especially around downtown of, you know, that's, that's one of the important parts in certain areas where you're really strolling and looking. A canyon of blank walls or window wraps or blinds closed is not interesting. You're going to hustle along or you're not going to come there at all. And so the suggestion would be that you require that that be maintained. I think San Francisco, I went looking on the internet to see who does and is that even legal? And can you do it? And they do have, it's like very prescriptive. It's like between three feet and seven feet, which is about where your eyes are. You must be able to see eight feet into the store. And I think it maybe it's tied to their particular retail streets and we don't have anything like that. We require that the building have the windows, whether you like it or not as a developer. But then what you do with those windows after that is up to you. And that may be the, the right balance. It's at least make it so that any future tenant can open the windows if they want. And you would expect that for the most part, people like that visibility and don't want to be in a windowless room. As we're in a windowless room with the blinds closed. When, a window full room with the blinds.
Um, is there, okay, so I understand from the perspective of you're walking along the sidewalk. And I'm, I keep thinking of office space, so I'm just going to keep going with like an office. Obviously, a retail space is a little bit different, although not that much different. Okay, I'm walking and I don't want the building to be boring, because then it feels like you're walking down an alleyway. Are there other alternatives than just a window? You know, can, I mean, is there like?
A smaller window.
A smaller window's fine, or like, I don't know.
This is.
Right, right, right. But like, is there, if it's so much more about the visual side of it, that makes me think like, are there not things that cannot just be done on the outside of the building? And maybe that comes back to like your menu or your incentive.
Think about the Bank of America building on the corner of Hewitt and Colby.
By the tree, or.
Under the, under the Christmas tree at the moment. It's got windows on both sides, on the west and north sides of that building. On the west side, they are totally visible into the lobby, the bank lobby. On the north side, they have a bunch of carols in front of those windows. You can still see in, you can still feel like somebody, as you're walking down the street, you can still feel like there are eyes on the street, you still feel like there's an opportunity to just see something a little bit different or interesting or whatever. It's not a hundred percent visible, it's not a hundred percent, but it's still able to be seen through. And then there are others that they totally screen them out. And again, it's like you're walking on a blank wall. But most of the streets that we are looking at this in, where it would be centers or whatever, is on a street that is going to have more pedestrian activity and is going to be more retail focused than office. Even though a bank lobby is retail and office at the same time.
Yeah. Ninety feels high.
Could you do something similar and like prescribe, rather than having that eight feet of visibility inside the space? Because that's a lot of like retail space you're giving up if you're like, hey, you can't do anything here.
No, you can do things, you could have mannequins, you can have those kinds of things, yes.
In like Westlake, where Macy's has got like three or four feet that's just there and it's a presentation case built into the building kind of a thing. And, you know, prescribe those instead of that ninety percent visibility. Be like, hey, we want to do this instead, you can have a couple of these, we can reduce your window count for the interior of the building a little bit, we'll trade off.
Well, I know that as a kid, growing up in New York, we used to go to Fifth Avenue for the Christmas lights and everything. And a lot of the shopping centers, stores, like the major department stores, had full-on Christmas displays and windows that were active windows, but that you couldn't still see into the store. I mean, but there was still something there that was act, you could actually see and they got changed regularly and there was something interesting to keep you going, as well as you didn't feel like you were walking down a blank wall, even though technically it was a blank wall.
I guess coming back to your question, Yorick, I guess my thought, first thought is that, I mean, if there was an opportunity for some redevelopment in, I guess downtown or anywhere, I would hate for a window requirement to be something that might impede that or maybe cause a developer to rethink that project. So, and I, to me, it seems to be a little overly prescriptive also, say, we have to have the window and then you can't put window coverings over it or something like, so I guess to me, I would say it, as it currently is, probably strikes closer to the right balance. If, and as you guys, I'm having more discussion, thinking about it more, so when I think about it, almost seems like, I could see maybe be nice if there was maybe some flex, more flexibility in the code for particular uses. There might be reasons why, you could still make a, you know, it doesn't have to be a bare brick wall, but not necessarily have ninety percent transparency. So almost, if that, if, if currently there's areas of ninety percent, that almost seems maybe overly restrictive and potentially limiting as well. So I would, I would generally probably at least, without maybe more input, think that maybe that, that would be going in the wrong direction to go further.
Yeah, I, 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 I think I, I agree that it is necessary for us to consider the pedestrian experience in how we're developing and whether or not it's something that gathers people in versus turns them off and they're just kind of rushing to where they go. But I'm also thinking about conversations that I've had with business owners and people who occupy these spaces. And there are a lot of security concerns and a lot of cost impact from busted windows and, and things of that nature. And so I, I agree with Commissioner Yanasek that I'm hesitant to be overly prescriptive in a way that could cause someone to say, you know what, I just, I'm not going to bother in this space.
Great, so that's a very, it's an impactful, it's a specific question that we've had, it's an impactful one. It's one that we get lots of complaints from developers sometimes. We get lots of complaints the other way from untransparent, boring buildings that make you want to scurry your way on out of wherever that is. How this works, we've got the goals and we're trying to implement goals like variety of welcoming and inclusive public and private spaces, DD three, designed and developed to enhance, helps all of the goals. And then we've got two policies that I see that mention transparency, the one that we've been talking about, DD three. And then for centers, which are maybe an enhanced area for this kind of a thing, DD twenty-five, require development in mixed use centers to provide active uses, human skilled frontages, front doors, visual interest, transparency and amenities along the street. Locate parking lots and structured parking behind or to the side of buildings. So we start with the goals, then we've got those two policies and then we'll have a regulation. And the regulation will say, require ninety percent transparency everywhere or, you know, where we're at or we pull back on it a little bit. We also have policies around flexibility and regulations and all of that. So I guess today, if we feel like we're at about the right place with the, with that concept of transparency, we will bring the regulations through this commission as well, so that we can see if those are properly implementing the policies and we may have a chance to, to think about those policies again as well. Will the, will the rules come, when will the rules come through before this finally?
Yes.
Will they come through and then everything will be approved? So if we want to go back, we understand the rules and it kind of dawns light on us. We understand what it's really implementing and what you're trying to do. We could actually go back and change then the policy if we felt that way. Yeah, I think it's going to be, we haven't mapped out exactly that end game. We've got, I don't know, half, maybe two-thirds, I would say of the regulations updated. We're wading our way through middle housing right now and I, I hope to be able to bring some updates on that to maybe even the next meeting. But yeah, our intent is to bring it all together as a package, so you can see the whole chain from goal to itty-bitty regulation.
Yeah, I guess I, I would say coming full circle back, the more I look at DD three, you encouraging these things, I think that's, to me, that's a nice, a nice policy statement, because it's not overly specific. It does allow then for flexibility within the regulations with that in mind, because, but there may be some things, you know, it, it's a poli, it's a policy, but provides for flexibility within, that may be, you know, more appropriate.
And we'll be coming back to design development again next week, two weeks from now, as you ponder this and have some more time to chew on it, if there are even specific rewordings or new policies or anything, this is the time to, to get those out. Okay, what else did I have? I noticed that we had two policies about block lengths, that's another important one. Thirty-three and forty were pretty much the same. This I think pairs with, we had a more specific policy with numbers in the urban form element about block length. So when large sites are redevelopment, we're going to seek that network and make it porous. I had questions about DD thirty-seven. Use landscaping elements to delineate spaces and frame views in pedestrian areas. Provide a clear zone from two to seven feet above the ground to support clear lines of sight and safety, particularly near to intersections or potential points of conflict. There was a question about that one. What is a pedestrian area?
I'd like, I'd like some folks to note the two to seven foot visibility thing. I, I think that's great and I, I think it's not always, it's not always the case. And that makes it difficult, I think about my kids on bikes and when they're riding through some spaces where there really isn't much visibility at that two to seven foot. So I, I would like to see that encouraged.
I guess about that, I'm wondering if, as far as in a policy statement, that almost seems more regulatory statement by specifying like that.
And it, they can sometimes, I mean, if it's, if it's too inflexible. But if it helps, if, if saying it more general, like humans, you know, I don't know how you would summarize two to seven feet. That sometimes it could be really helpful to be clear, but you're right, that is specific. I guess I was thinking, so.
That comes out of the SEP TED policies, which are the community public safety policies. So that people aren't hiding behind whatever, as well as providing clear visibility.
Well, and I guess, I guess what, what I'm wondering is if you put it in the policy at two to seven and later on, for whatever reason, you wanted to say, well, in the regulation, you want to go one to eight. Well, then now you're contrary to policy. So I guess, because I think you almost accomplish the same thing by saying just provide clear, provide for a clear zone above the ground to support quite things, without necessarily putting in the policy that particular, those particular numbers, to then provide the flexibility in the regulations.
That's fine.
Between someone's knees and their top hat, that way you don't know how tall they're.
Are we creating a strike zone?
That's right.
We do have a SEP TED. We do have a SEPTED policy, not far away from that also. I lost it. Thirty-four. Create a safe and comfortable environment by using design cues to differentiate slash demarcate. Maybe we can pick a term there. Public, semi-private, and private spaces incorporate clear sightlines and eyes on the street and other SEPTED features. I think of 37 as being a little bit more, I'm not sure if that was kind of transportation-related, as Chair Chatters was mentioning, like riding a bike and being able to, I think, right across the street, I saw someone was on a modern hover scooter kind of a thing, and someone pulled out of the driveway, and it wasn't a bad, they were able to get up, dust off, and keep going. Maybe a dent on the car, but either way, not a good thing. I think at that spot, there was a building that was blocking the sideline. But do we want to turn into sightlines gone, gone wild aren't great either? And these notes are more just to generate conversation rather than being a problem.
I, I think you can't, you can't develop pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, multimodal, transportation-friendly spaces if you are not clear about encouraging sightlines. That is directly linked to safety. So, the two-to-seven feet, Alessandra, did you say that that was?
I think it came out of SEPTED policy, but.
Okay, because that, that might be then useful to, instead of, as Commissioner Yanasek noted, the perils of stating actual numbers, just referring.
We could always put, we could above the ground at approximately two to seven feet, and that would, and that way, if it goes up to eight or down to one.
And I guess in, in our pedestrian areas, if that's like a busy, busy street, a downtown kind of area, we allow zero lotline buildings right up to the corner. And do prohibit solid fencing in most areas that would have pedestrians right up to the lotline. So, buildings would potentially, and I think that's what the situation was right here. The driveway is not far from the building edge. Worth noting that wheeled vehicles, maybe that's why, are prohibited on the sidewalk in downtown. And always a, a good reminder that riding on the sidewalk is, is dangerous, I think. If that works. DD41 about alleys and expanding their uses, location of accessory dwelling units and as multipurpose community space.
Oh, yes, I need to use the restroom. What's the code for that?
Five-three-one. And now the whole world knows.
Now everyone knows. Five-three-one?
Yes. Alleys is something that we're, we're putting a lot of thought into, especially with middle housing, and as we add a lot of infill development, and most, a lot of that is rear yard development. And currently, we have a lot of regulations, requirements, policies that connect all of those rear yard developments more to the street than to the alley, even if the street is much farther than the alley. So, some of it is fire code and addressing, and where the aid car will pull up is going to be on the street. And so, they want a gurney path.
It's addresses, it has nothing to do with the code.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Historic, I think, requires a relationship to the street, too.
But you're trying to add flexibility to the use of an alleyway, so.
We've, we've discussed this a great deal, and there's a couple of things. As I mentioned earlier, my daughter's in Long Beach, California, and Long Beach is like the home of middle housing. I mean, it has every possible version of it. It's really incredible when you walk down the streets. It's sort of like, oh, I should take a picture of that. Oh, I should take a picture of that. Because it's, and so, the last time I was there, we were walking to a pub to go watch a football game. And we went, ended up going down an alley, which then turned into a street. I mean, it literally was the connection, the continuation of the alley. And it had houses fronting on it. The only difference it was, was they named it something lane, as opposed to whatever. And so, and if you look at, these houses have no relationship to the streets on either side of the main, of the alley. And there are some places along that alley that are just garages, and there are some that are actual front doors, and those houses have no relationship. And we've talked about this a lot, because of with ADUs and how they're fronting or whatever, and found that Bellevue actually has, in their code, naming systems and requirements for their alleys so that they can become active streets, so that we have the versatility of using our land a little bit more efficiently. And right now, I mean, I think I've been told at least two or three times of this one piece of property that has no street frontage. It only has alley frontage, and people come in rather regularly to ask about developing it. But because it has no street frontage, it is technically an undeveloped lot, which is a taking. And it's like.
I don't like that.
Yeah, exactly. And so, if we named the alley, or if it met the standards, then this could be a property that could be developed with one, maybe two units. I don't know. I don't know the project per se. But it comes in about every year, because people find it on the map and go, ooh, this would be a great place to build my house, or whatever. And so, it's just a way of looking at our alleys as a resource in addition to what we already have.
Yeah, no, please do that, because alleys are cool, and I am very pro use alley. Plus, like, there's an assumption that your, like, that your street is the better place for the front of your house to be, and of course, that kind of makes sense, but there are like new neighborhoods that, you know, the houses technically face a main road.
That's my.
And that's their front door, but the rest of the neighborhood is behind them.
That's my house.
Right, and so I'm like, well.
I don't know the people across the street, but I know everybody on my alley.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask about DD41? It seems to, am I reading that you want to use alleys as a location of accessory dwelling units and community spaces in the alley?
Mm-hmm.
Probably on, fronting on the alley.
Fronting on the alley.
Okay, I guess to me, when I read that, it doesn't, it seems to say that you want to put them in the alley rather than fronting.
It's a really big alley.
I, I would presume that the, the idea behind that is stuff like having a mother-in-law unit above your garage.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we talked about potentially being able to segregate ADUs on parcels to be sold. And, and I, I don't think we could get to a space where we could do that if we don't think about expanding uses of alleys in this manner. Because you can't always segregate a parcel where the whole thing would have street frontage. But you could potentially, you know, sell it if you were allowed to have access through an alley, and that would be acceptable.
I think if we do that, we've got to take a really good look at setbacks again, though. Because the setbacks are going to be really different for an alley than street frontage generally, and you're going to be.
It's a good point. We have not looked at setbacks.
We haven't gotten to there yet, but we probably will.
I was going to say, we've done setbacks, right?
We, there are pretty much no setbacks on alleys in current coverage.
And that was the case on the street in Long Beach.
That'll be a different environment, and there's no escaping that alleys are where the garbage cans are going to be. And it's a more utilitarian feel, and in some cases, what is it, Post Alley and Pike Place Market and all that downtown, that alleys have turned into their, the main attraction. And those are, you know, special cases, more likely.
Where would it be without a gum wall?
That's right, the gum wall.
See, the gum wall's gone now.
Again, it'll be back.
It'll be coming back.
Like every five years. My office building is actually on Post Alley in Seattle, so, yeah, it, it's, it's a street now. It didn't used to be way back in the day, but it is a street. It is a whole community, actually.
So, we have many conversations to have with, with Public Works and Fire, and there's a lot of considerations to go into it, but it's something that staff is really interested in, because it provides so much more flexibility for development. Everything seems to be easier. I guess it's worth also encouraging the development of new alleys in the rare cases where we have large-scale redevelopments, because everything winds up being more easy. I mean, you have two parcels that are the same size, one has an alley, the other doesn't. You can more elegantly fit more units on the one with the alley every time.
And does that kind of then tie back into our, like, through-street initiative? With those, I mean, those regulations end up kind of overlapping? I would assume we need to make sure they complement each other.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which, of course, you're going to do that, so.
And I guess with this one, I, it's subtle a little bit. So, I guess we need to have more conversations about the uses, fronting the alley, and making those into maybe even go, and it's all the way would be like the Long Beach model. Or is it like that in Vancouver? I hear of laneway houses.
Yes.
So, there's plenty of examples around the world where the alleys become almost like mini streets, and you would take, I lived for 12 years on the corner of two alleys, and then moved to, it was a triplex, to the other side that was on the, on the street. And it was uncomfortable at first. I was so used to being on the alley, and that felt like my world. And I came in and out of it every single day and never even saw the French street.
Is alleyway maintenance presently the responsibility of the owners that, above the alleyway? Or is it a public, is it a public right-of-way? It's a public maintenance, okay.
I mean, there, there are mixture of both. I mean, so it depends on the alley, whether it is.
Yeah, my question was, are we going to dump a lot of this into the public cost pool for maintenance in the future if we say, hey, go forth and do this?
I think it's public. I know we've been, we have some dirt road alleys, and we've, there was one of our staff lives on one that they just paved it, we just paved it, this year, so I think it is all right. It has the same, similar aspects to the other, the big right-of-way. Okay, so we'll keep working on, on that for the use alleys better, and then maybe make it a little bit more explicit on the build more alleys side. The only, I think the last one that I had on my notes was 61. And we have incentives for energy efficiency and sustainability, but the offering priority permit review and building, so the incentives that are listed, I think, the first two, priority permit review and building permit fee rebates, may be problematic. I know we've had a difficult time, priority permit reviewer, one of the few non, you don't have to pay for them, or the city doesn't have to pay for them as an incentive, but it's valuable to the applicant. We've had a really tough time coming up with a workable solution there, but we will keep trying, because it's something that, that would be helpful. And then I, building permit fee rebates, I'm not sure if we can legally give those for, because it's a fee for service.
Why the mention of press releases?
Just celebrate, celebrate good deeds. I think we, whether it's a press release or some other awareness or celebratory.
Would, would it be?
Start preservation as awards, the awards, for instance, the Monte Cristo Award.
Would it be possible to maybe change, instead of press releases and awards, just change it to something not so hyper-specific?
Absolutely.
I almost worry that as a policy statement, again.
Oh, as a policy statement, it kind of is maybe overly prescriptive. For example, if you put it in the policy, and then maybe you want to cancel the award program later, hey, well, you're stuck.
Right.
I mean, so I, I almost, excuse me, just change the comma thereafter, materials to a period, and you got the same thing, and then you, you, you know, you can, within that policy, you can create and remove as, you know, maybe these, these things as they may be appropriate.
What's a, what's a priority permit review?
We take our permits in the order, your call will be answered in the order it was received, or your call will be answered first if your lead's certified.
Oh, if your lead's, okay.
Or, or what have you, providing affordable housing or any sort of public benefit.
Well, do you have to establish with the city that your lead's certified ahead of time? And then after you do that, then you can start requesting it? Is it kind of like having a, the?
Do a design to lead certification and know that you are submitting a lead-certified project.
At the same time as your permit, and then that gets bucked out and done first.
It is, you, in order to be lead-certified, your building has to meet a whole host of standards. So, you, you would know that you are a lead-certified building as you are designing it. And when you hand it in, you'd say, this meets the lead certification requirements as delineated, and you just tick all those boxes and say, we, we get priority.
And because you do that, then the city just takes that and goes, yep, sounds great?
They could.
They could. I guess what I'm trying to say is, like, are you having to establish your lead, and then you need to know, like, the city needs to know that you're lead, so then, then they can priority permit you? Right, that's what I'm trying to understand. Is this like a weird back and forth, like you're, okay, this is just when you're handing in your paperwork?
You would know that it was a lead-certifiable building, because you will have done that work.
No, not, not as the applicant, as the city, like, as the.
The city would accept the applicant's stuff, but the, they'd have to, I mean, if you didn't provide lead-certified documentation in your permit package proposal, the city could come back and say, the next time you do that, no, we're not accepting you. I mean, you don't want to create, you know, bad blood or whatever. If you're going to go for it, most people are doing it, because that's what they want to build anyway.
Yeah, I guess I just don't really understand how it becomes priority. I understand the criteria for becoming priority. You have to be lead-certified. But I'm trying to think of, like, the literal logistics. Like, if I'm just next in line, how do you know to bump me up?
Well, we, we have a, a list and an order. So, our planners come to work, and they've got a list of things in order, and those are sorted by order received, and there's some other minor considerations. But in general, it's, it's kind of the, as they come in, they go out. There are a lot of, everybody wants their permits reviewed faster. I see the value in doing it. The challenge is that unless you change resources, one going faster means another one goes slower.
Right.
That's the nature of incentives and disincentives. I guess you should have had sustainable building materials if you wanted to go faster. Seattle has a program for low-income housing, publicly funded low-income housing projects, and they get the priority tag, and they bump to the front, and maybe that's all they do, because you always have the next one coming in front.
So, and large projects use what are called permit expeditors. And so, and they will, they will essentially, working with consultants and permit expeditors, they will have already done a pre-review. I mean, there is, that it has been the whole building.
Before it comes to the city.
Before it even goes to the city.
They know that this is ready to go.
Yes, they know by the time.
And then you know it gets skipped, because you take 10 at a time and quickly look over them and realize this one needs to be put at the top of the pile?
Mm-hmm.
Those are, I'm like, really, was wondering the actual logistics, because I'm like, well, how much time are you actually saving if it's not recognized that it's ready to be skipped? But okay, that makes sense.
To kind of go off of Commissioner Yanasek's point, I, I would like to offer some, I guess, language change for DD61. In addition to changing that comma after and materials to a period, maybe changing, instead of by offering, saying such as offering, to make it not so prescriptive.
I think Commissioner Yanasek was saying, stop it there.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we figure out what the method is, but suffice it to say that we should encourage energy efficiency. My main point was that I'm not sure that we are able to offer priority, priority permit review, and I don't want to make promises that we can't keep. If the leadership of the city says to do so, we certainly will. And there are ways, I mentioned the Seattle one. I think Los Angeles, with our Frank, our housing, special projects manager for housing worked in LA for a while, and they had like a crack team of managers that would kind of get right to it and knock something out the door without necessarily slowing down others. Or you could have consultants. We used to have a priority permit where we would farm it out to a consultant, but that is tough, because it's, we have a complicated code, and you usually wind up answering more questions as staff than, so it doesn't wind up being that much faster. So, anyways, I, I just want to make sure that we, that it's a workable promise if we're going to make it. And if we were to, are we applying it to the right benefit? to the right benefit, because affordable housing and other public benefit would be equally desirable to sustainable building methods? But all of this has been helpful, and I do agree with maybe leaving it at encourage, and we can work over time at what exactly those incentives would be.
So, I had a thought, well, we can leave it at encourage, and that's fine, but if the requirement ends up being lead certification, my suggestion would be nothing below gold, right, like, nothing, where, you got to hit 60-plus percent of the points in the program in order to get the thing. If you're doing it for Fort, like, that's a huge giveaway, I think, on a project that's large, if you're like, oh, we're certified, yay, that's 40%, that, you can do that with some insulation and some nice windows, a little bit of HVAC.
Yeah, go platinum.
Platinum or bust, there we go, yes.
We do have, we have a height bonus right now for lead and equivalent certifications, that's something that we're, I think we're going to drop the, or recommend dropping the height incentives program, I think we've talked about that, that if we desperately want housing and taller buildings or more efficient, and provide all of that, then why do we make you pay for it? So, I'll just make that connection there, that we do have an incentive, but we're a little concerned about the, the logic behind that incentive, and there's a cheeky idea from our economic development department to flip that on its head and require lead certification if you're building short buildings instead, because by, just by their nature, a tall building is efficient and more sustainable than a short building, so maybe flipping it the other way. I don't think we'll get there, but I like.
But we do have minimum building heights and mixed-use centers and administrative, I'll try.
Yeah.
Those were some of my observations from just before Thanksgiving.
Before the food coma set in.
Still working on that up, yep. The leftovers, yeah.
Commissioners, were there any other items that jumped out at you, or that you thought would be useful to discuss?
I do just want to give a shout-out to DD seventy-seven. I'm not requesting any changes, I just, I'm glad that's there.
If we could remove, like, full video billboards from everywhere in the city, I am, I'm on board.
Okay, that was, I, I do, that's worth just a little bit of context, because that's a pretty significant policy, we do have a policy in our existing plan around develop a sign amortization plan to reduce the visual clutter of signage or something, we do allow billboards currently, in rethink zoning, we changed the zone names, they used to be B1, B2, C2, C3, and now they're MU and NB, when we did that, we did not change the zones in which billboards are allowed, so it says you can build billboards in the B1 zone, good luck finding a B1 zone. I don't know if that was intentional or not, but we do apply that, so we've had a billboard application, we rejected it, was appealed to the hearing examiner, and we did prevail, intentional or not, there just is not a zone that that is allowed, and I just wanted to reflect that clearly and transparently with this policy, and I assume we may have some debate from billboard companies or something at some point, but I'd rather have that out in the open than a sneaky.
It's not how they productive use of land.
Yeah.
Yeah, I presume out front is going to be really out front about their opposition to this.
I don't think I'm pro or negative billboard, but doesn't that conflict with historic preservation?
Do we have historic billboards?
No, not at the time.
This says no new billboards, but.
You're per, per, you're removing the existing ones.
Yeah.
None of them, none of them that are recognized as historic.
Is that what you mean, that there are historic billboards?
Yeah, I don't know the definition of historic, that you recognize any of them or not, yeah, I mean, yeah, I get, I know there's such a strong, that's why I really want to begin the conversation, I think it don't bother me, I don't, you know.
We'll build some.
You know, whether you're, they qualify your personal historic value, but, I mean, historical, so.
So, you're saying we should designate your house as a B1 zone and build all the billboards around it?
I guess, if, if there are historic billboards, then I don't, I'm not aware of them, so if there are, then maybe we want to reflect that in the policy and, and make an exception for those, I mean, I think of the faded, on the sides of the brick buildings, the ghost signs, and those are wonderful, I don't, I would not intend that we remove those, I wouldn't have thought of them to be billboards, because they advertise products that I assume don't exist anymore, maybe, maybe that's not the case.
Well, I, I'm thinking of, I'm, I don't know which building specifically, it's one of the ones on Hewitt, but there's a building that has a, I don't know if it would be called a billboard, but it has a big advertisement for the Talalip Casino on it, would that qualify as a, I guess, what is our definition of billboard?
A billboard is something that advertises a product or service that is not provided on the premise, so if you have a convenience store, and it says Pepsi, and you sell Pepsi, that's not a billboard, it's a sign, and we have sign regulations, if you have a, if it, you know, it's just a sign that says Pepsi in the middle of the, the street, but you can't buy it anywhere, that's a billboard.
So, like, if there's a sign on the Angel of the Winds Arena that says, we're going to have Paul McCartney come and sing, that's not a billboard, but if it was on the building across the street, that would be a billboard?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay.
If you want to know what a billboard is, go to the south end of Old Broadway, there's the most obnoxious billboard, right there, that's what I was envisioning. It's, it's at the very, very end, the south end, right before you, you hit that 526 Everett Mall interchange.
Oh, is it near the self-storage?
Yes.
One of the historic ones in Portland was the old White Stag one, with the deer, and when that one was no longer the White Stag building, it then got changed to Portland, Oregon, but the White Stag stayed, because it was a historic sign.
Commissioner Atkins, it could be worse, could be billboards like in Seattle, where they, they flip, so they make that flippy noise, in addition to being obnoxious, so.
At least it's not a video billboard.
Yeah.
That's why I always, White Stag, you know, it doesn't bother me, it's a bright, shiny, full-blown video, if you're doing it, it's just so terribly distracting.
Okay, now we're getting into community nightmares, so it's, okay, so, commissioners, other than the shout-out to no more billboards, any additional comments on this document, or are we ready to move to public comment for the evening?
I'm ready for public comment.
Okay, we don't have technical support, so I, I don't know that we can do, we can check online?
Yeah, we do, I'll go check with Jeff to see.
Okay.
Is there any public comment in person?
I do not believe we have any public comment in person.
Nor online.
None online?
No one waiting online.
Okay, with that, then we have completed our agenda, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.